Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, August 22nd at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our invocation, followed by a moment of silence.
Let's pray. Oh God, our Father, thank you for the privilege of being together tonight. We never want to take this for granted, Lord, how you provide. And God, we seek wisdom and guidance and direction as this community continues to grow and thrive. We pray your blessings upon all who serve, upon those who protect this community, upon those who serve in so many other ways. So, Father, again, we come before you this evening and asking for wisdom and knowledge to guide those who make the decisions for the betterment of our families and children. Thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Hardaway, would you lead us in the pledge tonight, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Batten Clerk Trezor, would you call the roll, please?
Vice President Hardaway.
Here.
Councilwoman Neal.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
President Bella.
Here.
Five present. Moving on to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we are honored to be swearing in new K-9 officers for the town of Maryville. I'll call on Chief Nusis to introduce our new dogs and do the swearing in. Judge Velasco, would you come forward, please? There's a wireless microphone on the table for you gentlemen to use.
All right, if we can come up with K-9 Yaga and K-9 Blue, officers Foltz and Wright.
It is my pleasure to swear in the newest officer of the Maryville Police Department, Officer Blue and Officer Yaga. And to that end, I will say the following. Officer Blue and Officer Yaga, by your training and natural purpose, you will faithfully and impartially maintain the peace, protect, and help with whatever is required of you to do as part of your job as K-9s of the Maryville Police Department, K-9 unit. Congratulations, Officer Foltz and Wright, for your new trainees. Thank you.
Chief, go ahead.
I just wanted to give a quick, brief, this is Officer Wright and Officer Foltz, of course, and their dogs, K-9 Blue and K-9 Yaga. Both dogs came from the same place that we got our other dogs from, and that's Batten K-9. It's in Ontario, Canada. K-9 Blue is a Dutch shepherd that was purchased through a donation made to the Maryville Police K-9 Association by Randy Hall of Luxor Homes. Blue is a dual-purpose dog trained to detect illegal narcotics. He can also help track, locate, missing people or fleeing criminals as well. He is trained in the apprehension of fleeing criminals, too. K-9 Blue is handled by, of course, Officer Nick Wright. K-9 Yaga is a Belgian Malinois that was donated to the Maryville Police Department by Batten K-9 and Fox News host and contributor Lawrence Jones. Yaga is also a dual-purpose dog trained to detect illegal narcotics, just like Blue. He can also track and help locate missing people or fleeing criminals. He's also trained in the apprehension of fleeing criminals. K-9 Yaga is handled by Officer Ian Foltz. So, welcome aboard. I know you guys will do a great job. Looking forward to bringing with everybody.
Great.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chief. And, Council, with your permission, I'll get together with Chief Nusis and get the proper thank-you notes out to these companies and organizations who donated these dogs to us. It's quite a savings for the town, is that right, Chief?
Yes. Each dog is approximately $12,500, and that doesn't include some of the other equipment that is necessary.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on tonight to the August Employee of the Month. Steve, do you know who that is, what department?
Yes.
So, the Employee of the Month, this month, this person is in my department. It is Joanna Guardiola. Joanna, you want to come on up? I have something to read for you. It's a certificate of recognition. Joanna's hard work, dedication, and positive attitude have made a significant impact on the Economic Development Department. She always goes above and beyond to help the public as well as employees. Joanna is willing to jump in and pick up extra work, assist other departments, and is a great team player. So, we'd like to present this for you and say thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome. Do you like to say something? You don't have to.
I'm just going to say thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you for your hard work. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Nicely done.
Yes.
I'll let you guys do that, and I'm going to move on. Moving on tonight, I do want to thank, who's sitting in for Clerk Trezor is Robin Johnson, so thank you for being here tonight, helping excellent. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for August 22nd, as well as the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of August 8th.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of the consent agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on this evening to the standing and special committee reports, Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next Tuesday, I think that will be the 29th, at 4:30, we'll have a Budget and Finance meeting. We met with all the department heads, and we've discussed their budgetary needs, and now we need to get the committee together, Sean and Jeff, so that we can look over everything, and then, once we look over everything, then we'll come back to the entire council and have a meeting with everyone, and so that we can do, you know, if we have to trim, we'll trim something or whatever we need to do.
Sounds good.
And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Street Department, anything from you, Steve, since Jeff is out?
Uh, no, I don't have anything at this time.
Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we had our first official meeting with me this evening. Lots of information, and of course, more to come. Councilman Pettit, you told me to say something.
You over here, Rhonda?
If you don't mind, I'm going to fill it.
I think it's spaghetti, yes.
Every year, the Greek church, St. Helena and Constantine, has a spaghetti dinner benefit, which this year, I believe, is September 25th at the Greek Hall, which benefits the Ross Township Food Pantry. So, that will be advertised, and I encourage everyone to attend. It's a great event, and I believe it's, they have carryout as well. I sent you the email, Rhonda, on the artwork. Lamar will be advertising that on our digital billboards for them, as well as a community service. Sheila, I don't know if some of the on-premise people, we've asked them before, do you have Larry Alt's phone number?
I do.
Okay. I'll forward you the email I sent to Councilwoman Neal. We can get that out to the on-premise digital people as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to Environmental Affairs, is any report for Mr. White?
No.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Any report from Public Safety?
No. No report.
Chief, anything to add?
No.
Okay. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. Briefly, we had a redevelopment commission meeting before the council meeting. We passed a resolution that will implement a grant that we decided to give to Midwest Aerospace as a part of their development of the old Fieldhouse building. Trista put that together, that passed unanimously. So, that appropriation, Robin, we need to get the check made out. Trista's going to get with Aralia. They've been patiently waiting on that for some equipment, so we need to get that check processed tomorrow as quickly as possible, a paper check, we decided, right, Joe?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The parks are in order. They have been mowed. I've been talking to a woman in the 4th Ward with her daycare, and she might have another party like she did last year, and then we request a fire truck to be there. But everything is going very well with the parks and the bike trail, which I have driven around and checked each one.
Very good. Thank you. Abandoned Blighted Properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
The Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. We have a committee meeting scheduled in Event Room Number One of the Mike Anderson Event Center for Thursday night at 4:30. Steve and I are going to be putting together the agenda. I think the notice went out. Linda put the notice out.
The notice is going to be.
Publicly. We've got some Capitol things to talk about, some, or physical things to talk about with core construction, and I know Jeff will want to try and be there, some of the things we're going to be talking about. So, that's Thursday night at 4:30 up at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center.
Thank you. Special Projects, Mr. Hardaway. I'm sorry, Mrs. Neal.
I see I was replaced, I didn't.
No, Mr. Hardaway, you've got a couple of changes here, sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Neal.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Hardaway.
No report.
All that for that, okay. Awesome. This one. Department and Commission Reports, Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
No report.
I see Matt's not here tonight. Department Head Reports, Ms. Shine.
I don't have anything right now, just down under large gatherings.
So, Kenny, would you mind asking them out there to either move a little farther away or just quiet down a bit? Thank you. Angie, anything to add tonight?
I did want to talk about, in the past, we worked with the company to bring the showcase video to Maryville. Our next item that we're working with, with the same company, is a showcase banner program. So, I've kicked that off and gotten that started and been working with the professionals to create a design. This program, again, is cost-free for the town, for the municipality, and they will reach out to local businesses for sponsorships. The banners will be approximately 30 by 72, and we've selected to place those throughout main corridors. They'll go town limits from all the way down Broadway. They'll also go across 61st, 73rd, and 93rd. Let me see if I'm missing anybody. Yes, 61st, 73rd, 93rd, and down Broadway, so that will pretty much target all the areas and just to help promote and feature Maryville. The program itself is fully insured by the company. They do all the maintenance-ing, they come in and install it with all the hardware brackets and such, and then we have a three-year program, and every year we could change the design. So, I have designs in progress, and I'll be more than happy to share those with council and really excited about that. We're also working with the Chamber on a Chamber Spotlight program and the Move to Indiana program with The Times. So, we're really looking to attract business residents and showcase what makes Maryville great.
Angie, do we know what the cost is going to be for a company to get their name on the banner? Did you mention that?
I was looking into that, and I have, they're going to get back to me.
Okay, so somebody like, I don't know, like maybe Pepe's Tacos could rent a banner for three years and?
Yeah, they can be placed on the bottom of every banner or somewhere within the banner. They can, yes, definitely, Pepe's can definitely get their name out there. Adam.
Hi, Adam.
So, it's very exciting, and again, we just look forward to it.
Very good.
Mr. President, Angie, were we limited on the corridors? Did they pick the corridors or did we?
I selected them.
Yeah, we picked them just so we'd cover all the main thoroughfares.
Can we, did you mention Maryville Road and Taft?
So, we looked at the poles we owned.
Okay.
Around town, and Steve and I, and then made our determination that way.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. That's what we were talking about early, so.
Yeah.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Angie. Mr. King, Street Department?
Uh, Street Department, obviously, we're very busy every day. The branch pickup program continues every day of the week. We have a crew constantly running through town, picking up branches. We've also been, we've been out crack ceiling some of the major roadways. We've also done some spot asphalt repairs with our pavement crew that we have in-house, and they've done a fantastic job. I can't say enough about them. That's all I have for the Street Department.
Can you update us on 86th Avenue? I see that it's, most of it's been paved and a lot of work is continuing.
Yeah, the work continues on the 86th Avenue Extension Project. The completion, we have a completion date of September 30th for the contractor to finish. We are, the extension part has been covered with asphalt. This has been a problematic project for us. The soils in there, it was just a swampland. A lot of material had to come out to get down to a solid base that we could build something on, but it's on track to be done the 30th of September.
That's great. And Steve, I noticed the new roads have been paved, especially the Business District over there next to Broadway, are they going to be striped? The roads aren't striped yet.
The frontage roads? Uh, they weren't striped originally. I mean, we can have them done.
80, was it 80 Ninth Avenue? No, actually, 86th.
It was 86th. Yeah, it was 86th where you cross over. We talked about that turn lane down there by Nippsco, yeah. That's got to get done.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a note of that.
Police Department, Chief Nusis.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Just to give you a brief cap, not all the numbers are in, but this is just a brief cap of July. We had approximately 2,800 calls for service. We had 435 traffic stops. Of those traffic stops, we've had over 200 tickets that were issued. This is something that's going to continue. These numbers aren't exactly accurate, these are just rough. They're going to go up, if anything, they're not going to be less, but I just wanted to give everybody kind of a brief update as to what's been going on in Police Department. We finally got all our information, and I finally emailed Steve King and was able to get an email of all the data that's being collected by our speed signs. So, starting Saturday, you're going to start seeing a lot more traffic enforcement. They're going to be solely focused on traffic enforcement. They're going to be hitting the areas that we have deemed as problem areas for speeding. So, they're throughout everybody's ward, and you're going to be seeing a lot more officers writing tickets. The other thing that we're planning on doing, we have some issues in town that we have identified, we have identified who is the problem, and what we're going to start doing now is we're going to start doing what is considered a goal-oriented policing tactic, where we're going to gather all the information that we need, and we're going to start trying to be preventative in some of these incidents that have happening versus being reactive. So, this is a great start to something, and I'm hoping that it's going to continue our current trend. The other thing that I wanted to report was, we had an unfortunate incident a couple weeks back on Taft, and we had the assistance of Crompoint EMA that came out and pretty much lit up the whole roadway and assisted us. Their equipment and their assistance through their EMA, you know, helped us with manpower, and it was something that was greatly appreciated, and that's something I would like to give a shout out to Crompoint and say thank you for the assistance. We are writing them a letter to say thank you. This is just one of these things that's been going on. We have, we're forming really good relations with our neighbors, and our neighbors from the south, north, east, and west. So, this is great because now we're starting to exchange information, and one of the newest things that we're exchanging is the traffic woes that we've been having. We're not the only ones. So, since we released that last statement about how we're going to be doing a traffic study, all these agencies have been calling me and asking, what are you guys doing? We have a huge problem. We don't know what to do with our speeding problems. So, I kind of gave them the information as to what we're doing, so we're all bouncing information off of each other and ideas. Last, this one is making me really happy. I've been having a lot of dialogue with a lot of the citizens of the town. They've been actually coming to me and talking to me, scheduling appointments, calling me, I've been calling them back, and they have been addressing a lot of things and bringing a lot of things to light that we never knew were an issue till now. So, I think this is a huge step in the right direction to establish a good relationship with the public, and that way, they are our eyes and ears. There's a lot more people in the public than there are police officers. So, if we have that relation and have that trust, like it's going, I think it's going to be a game changer for us fixing things.
That's great. Thank you, Chief. Parks and Recreation, Lisa. Hi.
Thank you. In partnership with 219 Ride and Wranglers, we had a glow night last Saturday night. It was a success, however, we found out that we have some things that we have to work out with the Police Department as far as noise ordinances, or, excuse me, ordinances, and also traffic control. We did have some complaints about that, and we're in the process of taking care of that and trying to make it so it works out a little bit better. This Saturday, August 26th, we're offering, the Northwest Indiana Indiana Basketball Club is having tryouts for AAU basketball, and it'll be for 3rd and 6th grader from 9 to 11, and 7th to 11th grade from 12 to 130. The tryouts are free for all Maryville residents. All you have to have is your school ID. We also have a new program at the center for parents of homeschooled children or friends of homeschooled children. It's called Creative Joy Comprehensive Art Program, and we offer art classes at the community center, and Elizabeth Munoz is the instructor of the class, and if there's any information, they can email her at creativejoyartprograms@gmail.com. The sessions are six weeks long, and we'll teach basic art concepts. We'd like to take a special thank you to the Colonnus Club and Heavily Purpose Ministries for dedicating a bench to Curtis Park on August 9th. August 26th, we are having a cruise night at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center from 5 to 9. We will have Coney King, Get Jerked, and Fat Guys food trucks there to help with the food. And as you know, school is back in session, so we are offering open gym. I am going to give you our rules and regulations, and we are also going to post this on our website so that we can have a successful open gym without having any issues. So, I will pass these along to you. And Maryville Pop Warner also begins this Sunday, so if you're not busy, come out and support the present and the future of Maryville. And that's all.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lot going on.
Yes.
Thank you, Robin. Moving on tonight to general orders. We do not have any first reading ordinances. We do have a second reading ordinance. It's Ordinance 23-21. It's the ordinance of the town of Maryville authorizing additional appropriations in the 2023 budget.
Still moved?
This was an appropriation for $400,000, Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of Ordinance 23-21 on second and final reading. Questions or comments from the council? We kind of discussed this during first reading, I believe, right? Hearing none, is there any public comment on this ordinance, appropriation of monies from the will tax revenue? Seeing none. Robin, roll call, please.
Vice President Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
And President Bella?
5-0, motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolutions, we have Resolution 23-29. It's a resolution of the town of Maryville transferring monies into 2023 budget within the motor vehicle restricted budget. The decrease amount is $30,000, the increase is $30,000, and net effect is zero.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Mrs. Yuzlak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pettit. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. Moving on tonight to the American Rescue Plan AP voucher register for purchases for August 22nd, 2023. Mr. Hardaway?
Yes. Tonight's rescue voucher is $42,367.67. Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of the ARP register voucher. The amount's $42,367.67. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to BZA and Large Gathering Actions, Ms. Shine.
Mr. President, we have one large gathering action, and one, the application is from Pepe's off Broadway, and it's, the request is approval for a large gathering permit for Mexican Independence Day. The purpose is to celebrate Mexican Independence Day. The event will be held Saturday, September 9th, 2023, from, Adam, you gave me two times, 4:30 and 4 o'clock, which one?
4:30.
4:30 PM to 9:30 PM.
But you can go in and eat early.
Huh?
You can go in and eat early.
Oh, okay.
You can eat anytime.
The event is held to raise awareness of the Mexican Independence Day. Approximately 170 people will attend. The event will be confound by the space and 170 seats available. There will be 100 parking spaces available and accessible from paved public streets. Petitioner has cross-access permission from Mavis Tires for guest parking. Drinking waters will be available for all attendees. There will be two male outdoor toilets and two female outdoor toilets, and two, which will be maintained by service sanitation. The indoor restaurants, restrooms will be available also. There will also be one dumpster and 10 trash cans on site. Those will be maintained by Republic Services. There will be no camping or overnight stays. Entertainment will be provided by Band Heavy Morello Revés. Alcohol will be sold at this event, and a petitioner has supplied the amusement and entertainment permit as well as their liquor and catering license. Security will be provided by the Maryville Police Department. Security will be provided by the Maryville Police Department. And if you have any questions, Adam is here to answer all your questions.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity. I want to also welcome the new members of the council. I want to thank the president, and I also like to congratulate my friend, Chief Nusis, on his appointment, so.
Well, the only thing I'll say is Adam does this every year, and I think every year it goes off without a hitch, and I certainly have no problem with approving this, but I'll turn to Mr. Pettit, who's Ward this restaurant.
This is, yes, this is in Ward 6, and Adam's mom and dad lived in Chapel Manor for a long, long time. So at this time, I'll make a motion to approve the large gathering.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second chair, recognize Mrs. Neal for a second. Open for discussion. You know, I want to just take the opportunity, Adam, too, you know, when you were able to sell your property to CVS, I know that you had a lot of options available to you at that time.
I did.
And to have you just come right down Broadway and stay within the town, I said, you know, we really appreciate that. You had other options available to you, I know, and you stayed in Maryville, and...
Well, it was home, and, you know, to go somewhere else, it's kind of like start all over, so, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to be part of Maryville, and, you know, we, 44 years has been, you know, it's part of the community, and it would have been a shame to leave it.
That's a lot of tacos. Wow.
I was thinking more margaritas, but...
I can't talk about alcoholic beverages.
More importantly, Mr. President, they took an abandoned building, a vacant building, and called it home, so I appreciate that as well.
That's a good point, Sean. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion about the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Adam.
Thank you very much, and hopefully I'll see you all at September 9th.
Moving on to old business, is there any old business before us? Hearing none, new business, we have one item, a recommendation and appointment of a new town representative to serve on the South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority. I would like to recommend the appointment of Deanne Patina. Deanne is the president and CEO of the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce located in Maryville. Prior to her role with the Chamber, Deanne served in the hospitality industry for several years, first as a sales executive with the Radisson Hotel at Star Plaza, secondly, as a director of sales with Blue Chip Casino Hotel and Spa, then back to the Radisson as a director of sales and marketing, and finally as a director of meeting and event sales with Fair Oaks Farms. Her transition to the Chamber in January 2020 was natural since she served on the Chamber Board since 2012, and at the time was the current chairwoman. Deanne relocated to Northwest Indiana from Indianapolis in August of 1998 and has a passion for the region and its continued growth. She resides in Crompoint with her daughter Claire and Lincoln, their dog. Deanne has extensive experience dealing with many of the movers and shakers in our region. She is excited to serve on the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority. I now ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzak for approval to appoint Deanne Patina to be our representative on the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority. Open for discussion.
Obviously, Mr. President, serving on the Board of Directors, I've worked with Deanne for a number of years, working with her on the annual gala. I've seen her work at the Radisson as well as with the Chamber of Commerce. The new branding of Crossroads Regional Chamber to reach out, we have over 700 members in 42, 47 ZIP codes, and a lot of that has to do with Deanne's hard work, so kudos on your choice. She's going to make an excellent representative.
Thank you. In anticipation of your approval, I did pen a letter, which I included in your packets, which I'll send on after this is approved. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Moving on tonight to public comment, is there any public comment this evening? If so, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we allow three minutes for public comment.
Shonda Flowers, 6137 Connecticut Street, Maryville. I believe Lynda gave you guys the pamphlet from Red Cross. I don't see the young lady here, and she was going to come to just let you guys know that they're partnering up with other communities and other counties, and they're having a luau. I believe it's September 9th. If you don't have it, I'll make copies and put it in your mailbox, but it is in an effort, yes, in support of what's going on in Hawaii and the devastation there, and it will be an awesome opportunity for us to partner up more with Red Cross, to be able to have a direct line of communication when it comes to certain things and to streamline some other things. So I just wanted to make sure on behalf of Marcella, since she's not here tonight, that I brought that to your attention.
Thank you very much. We did receive a flyer, Shonda, so.
Brian, message 201, East 68th Place. I would like to have a little bit more information from the economic development. They're issuing a grant, how much is the grant for?
$331,000.
And it's going to what company?
Midwest Aerospace that took over the old fieldhouse, and they bought the building from Albany's.
And this is comprised of TIF money?
Yes. Actually, Brian, it's proceeds from the building, I believe, right, Angie?
Correct.
When we, we bought the building from Purdue University, and we tried to get the Korean Pharmaceutical Company to come in there, they could not get their financing, so we kept it, and when Pat Riordan was town manager, Albany's Candy bought the building from the town, and we put that money into the allocation fund.
Correct.
And then Albany's decided not to locate in the building. They've expanded their operation on US 30, and they sold it to, they go by two names, Brian, they go by Chicago Magnesium, they also go by Midwest Aerospace. They are a foundry that manufactures parts for the aircraft industry and for NASA. So some of this equipment, some of the money for the 331 is going to very specialized equipment that they need in there to manufacture the parts.
So the town has given $330,000 to a multimillion-dollar company that makes parts for NASA, who probably has a lot of federal government money to spend, so...
If that's the way you want to look at it.
I think a lot of people would look at it that way. The other thing that I would like to mention about traffic is, I've noticed this over the past couple of weeks, Amazon drivers are, like when I was coming to the town meeting, I was coming to Madison, at the corner of Madison and 68th Place, there's a hill. Amazon van was parked in the wrong lane with the flashers on facing the wrong way. That is, and I've noticed this even in the neighborhood by the high school, High School Heights, that we have Amazon drivers who are parking on the wrong side of the road and blocking traffic, and it's just like, we need to, we've never had a problem with FedEx or UPS about that, and I understand that Amazon hires a lot of drivers that are maybe young or inexperienced, but FedEx and UPS and other delivery companies spend a lot of money training their drivers with safety, et cetera. Eventually, that's going to turn into an accident, especially at 68th and Madison. But I just wanted to point that out. One last question, did the town repair the median at 73rd and Van Buren by the Ittins?
Yeah, in the process.
Yeah, the median, the median's been repaired, Brian, and we've also put four large but flatter decorative boulders on each corner, so when people come zipping around the corner, hopefully they'll hit the boulder and not knock the planter over again. But I was actually over there today, and it's, that's been done.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, all. Hope you don't mind, we're just going to hand out a flyer real quick. My name's Chris Holst, 800 West 73rd Avenue. We were here a couple of weeks back. Nice to see you again, Steve.
How you doing?
And thank you. It was very quick work, and I want to thank everyone on the council for, first of all, giving us a long-winded, more time than most people get. But we also want to thank you very much for the quick action. As Steve just said, there's been some very good traction on our project. The island's been repaired, there's been boulders put up, and we're highly optimistic that we'll still be able to get shrubs in before frost. Is that right, Steve?
They're coming, right?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. But, and also, I had mentioned to Jeff that there was supposed to be a linear sign. Did he mention anything to you about that?
So that, we've actually discussed that, we actually had this conversation today. And the sign that you see here, this is down at the museum.
Correct.
So we're going, we're contacting a sign company, Landmark Signs, who the town deals with quite a bit, and we're going to get, we're going to have a replica of this made and put in that planter so the original can stay at the museum.
Do we have any timeframe on that?
I don't, we just talked about this this evening, so.
So Steve?
I can't give you a timeframe.
You would put that inside the planner, then? Is that the plans right now?
Well, wherever it went, I don't even know where it went originally. I mean, that's something, when we move forward, we can talk about where that went originally and see if it's still feasible to locate it in that area without getting it run over.
Because I think there's a lot of very good options.
That's fine, sure.
And so, that was our main concern. We wanted to thank you for the traction and the timely manner and everything that has progressed. I think we will certainly welcome the replica, and, you know, if we could have a little sign somewhere along there that says Turkey Creek, that would be great, too, because since the last time I was here, I've done a lot of research through the history of Maryville. And Turkey Creek has a lot of history, has been one of the first settlements, so having a sign, that would be very nice.
So make a promise for me tonight, please. That you'll keep an eye on it, the area, you'll keep it clean and help us out.
You have my commitment on that, sir.
And that's why you got fast action, because you offered to do that.
Yeah.
Because we can't do everything up here, we can't see every square inch in town. We're 33 square miles, you know?
Yes, sir.
So if you guys are going to take a little ownership of that, that will be wonderful.
We're going to take complete ownership on that. We will, we will see to it. We're going to, we're going to make you proud, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just so you know, so we actually talked to a landscaper today, and with the excessive heat this week, it's not feasible to do the plantings.
Sure, sure.
You'll see it here in the very near future.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, guys. Moving on tonight to announcements, we have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting on August 23rd at 6:30. Town Council meeting, the next one is on December 12th. Reminder for the council, we have an executive session on Wednesday at 5:00.
5:30.
5:30. 5:30.
5:30, here at Town Hall, the conference room. Anything else for the council?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you.
Lisa? Lisa? Here are extras.
Okay, I'll come over and get them. Thank you.
Lisa, you did a great job.
Thank you.
You did awesome.